Good evening, everyone. I call the order of the July 18 business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Hughes, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Murawski?
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now, if you're watching online. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you might have. We're going to start in just a moment here with the superintendent's update. And then if there's no disagreement from my colleagues on the board, we will move the athletics update presentation up so that it's immediately after hearing of the public. That way, we can honor our guests' time and hear about our student athletes early in the meeting. Any concerns with that adjustment? I think, could someone make a motion to revise the agenda as such?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Wonderful. Before we hear from the superintendent, I wanted to mention that we have often started these agendas since I became president with a list of board priorities. Our last set of those sunsetted on the 13th of June. I do believe it's important for us to say in advance what the most important work is and what winning is going to look like, because I think this forces strategic clarity and helps with accountability for ourselves and for the district. One of the things that's different now is we have a permanent superintendent, which we didn't have the last time we wrote board priorities. So over the next few weeks, I'm going to work hard to have calls with my colleagues and with her. So my hope is that we could have a proposal for a new set of board priorities by our August 15 meeting. So nothing to do on that, but just previews of coming interactions. And with that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you, President Lindy. I will be very, very brief. The only thing that I have to share tonight is actually a flyer that I shared earlier with the board around our Safety Town Hall that will be hosted in this auditorium on Wednesday, the 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Joining us on the panel, we will have a panel discussion as a part of the Safety Town Hall, but joining us for the town hall is the current interim police chief, Chief Fiji, as well as our representatives from Children's Hospital, I believe is actually our medical partner right now, but a psychiatrist will be on our panel, as well as some of our community partners. And we are doing this in joint partnership with the NAACP and the Urban League, and so we do want to make sure that we fill the auditorium. For those that are not able to attend in person, you will be able to join us live online, and we will make sure that we also record it and have it on our website as well. So want to share that one thing. The second thing is, this week, we will finally have the launch for our new website. We're so excited about that, so I am looking forward to sharing that with you, and I do believe that you will definitely be pleased. I do want to offer hats off to our communications team that's really worked hard to make sure that happens. That's all I have for now, President.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Wright. So we are now at the point on our agenda where we will hear from the public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted for people online, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response, any question you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the livestream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you very much. Could the administration let us know how many speakers we have this evening? We have no online speakers this evening. Thank you, Mr. Hoing. I know we have at least two who are in person. For folks who've not watched before, we typically don't respond in the meeting to hearing of the public. Sometimes that's because of time, sometimes it's because there's follow-up work that needs to happen prior to a response, but we do ask for people's contact information so that we can provide a response. If you haven't received a response and you've asked for one, I would ask you to contact the board office directly so that we can make sure you do. We have tonight Ruth DeBono and Aaron Durico.
Hi, my name is Ruth DeBono. I recently graduated from Walnut Hills High School, and I am here, as always, with the Young Activists Coalition. Recently, the ACLU of Ohio, along with the Young Activists Coalition, released new data demonstrating major disparities in discipline and treatment of Black students in our schools, as well as polling demonstrating the community's view on policing in our schools. In CPS schools, Black students are eight times more likely than white students to be expelled without instructions, five times more likely to face emergency removal, and six times more likely to receive out-of-school suspension. And there are many more horrifying statistics like that. CPS is harming Black students in our schools every single day. This data is not old. This data is from the most recent 2021-2022 school year, and from polling that the ACLU did, 53% of parents and 65% of recent graduates from CPS schools do not support the current contract between the Cincinnati Public Schools and the Cincinnati Police Department, which is putting police in our schools when students should be given the opportunity to learn and grow and not being policed for normal childhood behavior. School safety is extremely important in our schools, and you cannot claim to be making Cincinnati Public Schools safe schools when Black students are being so disproportionately punished and the school-to-prison pipeline is being perpetrated by CPS. Unnecessarily entering these students into the criminal justice system when they should be being given opportunities to learn and grow in school, as that is what school is for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron Durico, and that's the last speaker I have, unless we're missing some.
Alrighty. Hello, Board. I am Aaron Durico. I am the vice president, and as always, speaking on behalf of the Young Activists Coalition. As you know, as Ruth just told you, our organization has recently released new data that we received through public records requests filed directly against the Cincinnati Public Schools School District and Cincinnati Police Department on the state of discipline in the district. And the findings, as I'm sure you already know, are serious. And forgive me for repeating the data that Ruth just already talked about real quick, but it's worth repeating. I see that there's a lot more people in person here than there normally is, and this is not information that you would get just by watching these school board meetings, because the school board has done almost everything in their power to obfuscate the reality of this data and prevent people from actually realizing the dire state that discipline is in the district. Black students in Cincinnati Public Schools are 21 times more likely to be put in alternative placement centers relative to their white counterparts. And these data points are, of course, adjusted for population. 10.5 times more likely to be put in alternative learning centers, six times more likely to receive out-of-school suspension, eight times more likely to be expelled without instruction, and five times more likely to face emergency removal. And across the district, students in CPS are two times more likely to interact with a police officer than they are to interact with a school counselor. This is incredibly serious, and a lot of people in the district already know this, because as we know, 53% of parents and 65% of recent graduates do not support the contract between CPD and CPS. And this is directly through the ACLU and their polling that they've done in the city of Cincinnati. Considering these facts, and these facts that haven't changed for years, let's remember, because YAC has been working with the newest data available to us for the past three years, and these facts have not changed at all, the relative refusal from the district to address this can be described in no terms other than complete negligence. The public opinion is here. The public opinion says that people are not happy with how things are, but the district still refuses to do anything. Why is he a student organization?
Thank you very much.
Students are raising the alarm on this.
Thank you, Aaron. So we're going to transition now to the presentation we have from athletic director Josh Harden, recognizing our student athletes.
All right. Thank you for having us here tonight. Just before we get started, wanted to again thank the board, thank the superintendent, and thank everybody at CPS for having athletics present tonight. And on behalf of Josh Harden, the district athletics manager, he couldn't be here tonight due to the reschedule, but he really wishes he could be here to honor and recognize our student athletes that we're celebrating tonight. So I'm Ricky Miller, his assistant, over seventh through 12th grade athletics. Brent Langhorne's here over elementary athletics, but just wanted to provide everybody with a brief update in regards to athletics, and then of course, get to the highlight of the presentation, our champion student athletes. So if you want to hit the first slide for me, thank you. Just a few athletics updates, generally speaking, over the athletic department. We'll start with the AAA Pathway, the Academic and Athletic Accountability Pathway, which is really thriving right now. And again, coming into this summer, looking for ways to revitalize the program and support our student athletes in their growth and in their journey to become academically eligible at the collegiate level, as well as just help things like GPAs, ACT scores, and overall tutoring support, ways to provide them with ways to be successful once they get past high school. But Colleen Cheek, our AAA Pathway advisor, has done a great job, and we're looking forward to an August 12 meeting this year, where we meet with school counselors, AAA Pathway coaches, athletic directors, and other school administrators, where we can really reset our expectations going into a new school year and talk about more ways to support our student athletes. We look at esports, one of the awesome developments our department made this year, specifically over at Gamble Montessori, where they had the Gaming Gators, and a competitive team in which they played on Nintendo DSs and state tournaments, but really saw an awesome pilot program happening over there this year. And really looking forward to ways to develop that program and grow into potentially five more schools this year. So really want to thank Amy Randolph and her support in managing this program, but also the athletic directors at some of those schools in doing so as well. And we know what kind of team opportunities esports can provide, scholarship opportunities, and other just great, great times for our students to develop and work together. Of course, our coach and student, or sorry, our coach support and resources. So one of the things our office takes pride in is the certification for all coaches, making sure everybody has what they need to be OSHA compliant, NFHS compliant, and able to coach and support our student athletes in a safe and healthy way. So this summer, our office has partnered with a company called The Coaches Tool Chest. It kind of puts all those certifications in a one-stop shop. We've created codes where we're supporting the financial component to those certifications as well, taking that burden out of our coaches' hands, so we get more coaches certified, trained up the right way, and of course, on the field with our student athletes. There's a ton more updates that we want to talk about, but really, those are the ones that we wanted to highlight today and what we're really excited about moving into next school year. So I'll hand it over to Brent Langhorne with a couple other updates, and then we'll get to the students.
Thanks, Ricky. Thanks, everyone, for having us this evening. As Ricky mentioned, I'm Brent Langhorne. I focus on elementary athletics, so K through 6th grade sport offerings in the district. CPS Athletics is committed to a motto of progress and impact through increased participation in all of our elementary sport offerings. Each school year in my role as elementary athletics coordinator, I've worked directly with resource coordinators and elementary school staff across the district to enhance sport opportunities for K through 6th grade students. As you can see in the chart, we have been fortunate to increase elementary sport participation each year since my time with the district. This has been accomplished through strategic planning and collaboration, which results in sport programs that make sense for our schools and our students. As we move forward, I look forward to continued collaboration with resource coordinators, community partners, and CPS stakeholders to continue creating equitable sport experiences for CPS elementary students. You know, one of the mottos that we have in our office is start small, scale fast. So as you can see with the chart, in my first year, you know, we would try, you know, to pilot a program with a couple schools and see how things went, see what works, what doesn't, and then look to scale fast and impact as many schools and students as possible with elementary athletics. So really excited about the growth there. And then as you can see, you know, more sport offerings result in more students participating. So that first year, we had 577 students participating in elementary athletics after school, sponsored by the district athletics office, and it's grown to, you know, 2,043 students last year, and we're looking to hit 2,803 students, you know, in the coming years. So really excited about the growth, and it wouldn't happen without, you know, the resource coordinators at the school level, staff members at the school level, that I've been fortunate to work with and grow this program overall. I think we have one more slide, Rob.
Yep.
And then just wanted to touch on our junior high and high school athletic numbers. We always talk about synergy within our office, starting at the elementary level and then growing it from there. So as you can see here, we have a lot of offerings in the fall, winter, and spring, with 5,716 total rostered, and then 4,034 total students participating in junior high and high school athletics. And with that being said, we've got a video highlight here of our champions from this past school year.
We're back for the CPS Athlete of the Month program. Today, we're at Spencer High School.
Oh, my God. All this is really overwhelming, because I, like, it really makes me so proud that I actually get...
They're bringing back another championship to come to Cincinnati, in addition to the AFC Championship, in addition to the UC Bearcats going to the College Football Playoff. The city's on fire right now, and I'm so proud of these TAF senators, their family, their friends, the teachers, the administration. The city is so incredibly proud of this team and this school, and I'm so proud to be a small part of it.
The revenge tour is complete. Congratulations, senators, on your state championship. You deserve it.
Really awesome video there, and it gets me excited for next year to go for more championships. So, you know, thank you to Joy Matoso. He put together that video for us. Moving along, you saw in that first clip, there was a group of students excited, jumping around, and that was our Brain Bowl tournament that we had this past school year. The district supported it for the first year. We had seven schools participate. It came down to Kilgore versus Spencer. It was, it came down to that final five questions, bonus questions. It was like March Madness buzzer beater. Kilgore got that final question right, and they were so excited to win that championship. Michelle Kowalski and Barb Culbertson were the coaches of that team. They couldn't make it tonight, but just wanted to shout out Kilgore for being the 2022 Brain Bowl champion, so let's give it up for them. Awesome stuff. And I do want to reiterate the video, you know, none of that could have been possible without the students, of course, but also want to shout out our awesome athletic directors, our coaches, our parents, and just the community for supporting all of our teams, all of our schools. You know, we're all in it together, and we're really proud of what we were able to accomplish this year and what we want to accomplish in the future as well. And I also do want to give one more shout out. The Walnut Hills Robotics Team actually won a state tournament this year, too, competed in the world championship as well. So really awesome stuff, all the way across the boards in extracurricular activities. So I started the presentation by saying the fun stuff now, right? Recognizing our kids, our student athletes. So first and foremost, want to start with our Student Athletes of the Month. You know, each year, we have Student Athletes of the Month, and we've created an Athlete of the Month program where we highlight and recognize these kids who are excelling on the field, but of course, in the classroom and out in the community as well. So we highlight a male and a female student athlete on a monthly basis to get to 18 by the end of the year. We've invited some of those kids here tonight. So I know that we have Jesse Branch from Hughes High School. I don't know if Enoch Siddiqui's here from Aiken High School. No Enoch tonight. And we've also got Johnny Martin from Euler High School. So we're going to keep Johnny up there, actually. Now, part of the Athlete of the Month program, so she'll be part of this one. So part of the Athlete of the Month program is at the end of the year, we get to take that awesome list of 18 student athletes, and they're all eligible to win a scholarship in David Erker's name, who was the athletics manager before Josh Harden. So this year, we are very excited to announce our scholarship winners. Johnny Martin from Euler. And Danielle Hall from Hughes High School. And this is actually the first time they're publicly being recognized, though we have a check presentation as well. Give it up for our scholarship winners one last time. So they've earned $2,000 towards secondary education, as well as a brand-new laptop. And those are also the first winners ever from Euler and Hughes High School, so big stuff going on this year. Yes, very awesome. Before we get into our state champions, we did have a couple other champions that I glanced over real quick who weren't able to join us tonight, but did want to recognize a couple of our star student athletes at our schools who have had incredible accomplishments this year, starting with Tyler McKinley, a rising junior at Walnut Hills High School. He won ECC Basketball Player of the Year. He won District Division One Player of the Year, and most recently has been invited to the U-17 Olympic Team Tryouts. So very cool from Tyler. We have Rachel Hamila. So water polo is a sport that a lot of our schools don't have, but Rachel, in her extracurricular time, has been able to pursue her passion as part of the USA Water Polo Development Program for the Olympics. So she was not able to be here tonight because she's actually out at a camp right now, but she's part of the 16U developmental team, so shout out to Rachel. We've got a national champion squash player from SCPA, Diane Najoli. She's in the far right on this picture, but she was part of that Cincinnati Squash Academy that our department's been collaborating with the past two years, but really wanted to highlight and recognize Diane as well. And then we've got Paul McMillan IV, another star basketball player in our district, who was a Woodward this past year. And Paul actually won the Gatorade Ohio Player of the Year for basketball. In addition, during the state tournament this year, he passed LeBron James in career points scored in Ohio, and most recently committed to Division One New Jersey Institute of Technology to play basketball and go to school. That brings us back to where we were, but just really speaks to some of the individuals and some of the teams in our district that set the tone, and like Brent said, you know, we want to set an example at that high school level and build it from the ground up, so these elementary students have some awesome role models to look up to. So we talked about our scholarships, we talked about our individuals, but now it's time to talk about our actual state champions this year. So we'll introduce Aaron Martin to the scene. Aaron, this past year, won the 155-pound weight class state championship in girls wrestling. And I know it was a big one for her, because last year, she ended in fifth place. You know, talked about how that motivated her to get back this year, and of course, in that video, you saw a clip of her taking that pen down and winning the actual state championship this year. And I believe you're committed to play at Tiffin as well, so great stuff. Bella Noble, who's not able to be here tonight, Walnut Hills diver, sorry, Walnut Hills diver, also won a state championship as well. So congratulations to Bella. She had a score of 491.8. She's also going to the University of Akron to dive in college. And then another Walnut Hills star swimmer, Phoebe Wright, won in the freestyle for the 100, and she was also in second place in the 200, so almost got that second one, but also a state champion from Walnut Hills. And then our big ones from the video as well, our team champions from this year for the Division III Boys Basketball Half Senators. They lost in the Final Four last year. They marked this year as the revenge tour, and they lived up to expectations. Coach Bradley and his staff led the way. They had some great games. We were able to go. I know I saw Ms. Jones at a couple of the games, but they won the state championship in Division III Boys Basketball. So we have their cheer team and the boys' basketball squad up here tonight. So we have their cheer team and the boys' basketball squad up here tonight. Take more sense for the cheerleaders to kneel a little bit. So Senators, we're going to keep the Senators up here. Stay on the stage, please. Senators will stay up. All right. And now, before we head back to our seats, we'll get one group picture of all of our champions. Through. We have questions from board members. Ms. Jones.
I don't have a question. I have a comment. Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. I just wanted to sort of put this in the ears of board members in our community about the All-Star Showcase. It's basketball. But I think the magnitude of it in terms of all of the particular events that you have, including the booths that you have upstairs where people, our students, could get information about career opportunities and colleges and all of that. It was held at the Fifth Third Arena at UC. And I wanted to congratulate your team, ABC, and all of the Connect, Project Connect, and all of those who were involved in that. It was successful first year, and we're looking for that to be bigger and better. And it was so much fun. So next year, look forward to being bigger and better.
No doubt. It was a blast, and we want to do that with all of our sports. So we've got an awesome partnership with UC, and we actually just planned a meeting in two weeks to talk about next year's event, so.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Other board members? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation. And of course, athletics has a very, very big place in my heart. You know, being a product of CPS and being a product of the CPS Athletics. Thank you for all that you do. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. And Ms. Bolton?
Yes, very quickly, and you just started towards the end there in the response. So we want to make sure that we are always thanking, always thanking all the partners that our Athletic Department and Activities Departments have been able to assemble over the years, whether it's ABC, or whether it's UC, or whomever it is, Children's Hospital. All those partners are really a part of this success, and we want to thank them as well. Of course, taxpayers that pay for all of this, but most particularly, the partners that put our kids first. So thank you for your leadership.
Absolutely. Couldn't do it without everybody else. Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Dr. Moffett?
I just wanted to say thank you. I had an opportunity to come to the Brain Bowl, and that was so much fun. The excitement in here was, it was a lot of fun. So I'm looking forward to coming to that one. And I had to leave before the two, the two schools got together. But they were up here on the stage. They were having a great time, so I'm looking very much forward to that. And in this time, when athletics is such a good, a good mental stabilizer for our students, it doesn't shock me that you're seeing a rise in the number of students that are participating in your prediction for next year. I do want to ask you a question. What sport is most, I mean, your total was huge, 2,000 or 4,800, something like that. But what was the sport that was the highest among elementary students?
Yeah, so in terms of elementary, basketball is our number-one sport right now, with soccer and flag football right behind there. We certainly want to get to a point where they're all at that equal playing field. You know, last year, we had a pilot volleyball program that had 10 schools. Looking to expand that to 20 schools next year. So that start small, scale fast motto, continue to go to that. But we're really excited about the growth with all of our elementary sports.
Good. Well, congratulations, especially on your esports. I think that's going to be good, too.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Moffett. Mr. Craig?
So I want to give a special shout out, though, to the folks who oftentimes we forget about, thanking which are the parents and those family members and the friends who were there at every game. They were cheering those students on, making sure they got to the buildings, home, and all these wonderful things safely. Because I think far too often, they put in a lot of work to make sure that all of their students have the support and appreciation and can achieve these things. So I think it's really cool to do that. And I also want to just take a personal note to say that I think the work that all of our staff does, especially within activities and athletics, is tremendous. And I think that's part of what makes a well-rounded student. That's part of what makes every student that comes out of CPS that much better. The day balls, opportunities to excel and learn skills and learn leadership that they do in sports and other extracurricular activities. So I really find that very rewarding and appreciate all the hard work you all do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I think Ms. Jones had one last comment.
Yeah, I would be neglectful if I did not acknowledge the baseball and softball All-Star week, was it a weekend or one day? I can't remember. I was there one day.
Yeah, it was a one day, similar to the basketball.
Yes, similar to basketball. And am so impressed, as a former softball player and a fast-pitch coach and fanatic, I stayed on the girls' field that whole day. And I was so impressed with the level of skill and how far our girls have come since I coached down attack. So very, just wanted to acknowledge and recognize them also, and the boys' team.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you all so, so much for a wonderful year and the work that you do in the presentation. Is there anything you'd like to share with us before we close? We're just appreciative of you guys having us tonight. So thank you, and we're excited to come back whenever. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Thanks. Take care. Okay, so we are going to move now to approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the Special Public Meeting, June 22nd, Special Meeting, June 27th, Business Meeting, June 27th. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. We're going to transition now to Item E, which are the committee reports. We have three of these this evening. Is there someone who's going to present the minutes for the Policy and Equity Committee meeting?
I wasn't there.
Are you, Ms. Bolton, are you able to?
Thank you. On behalf of the Chair and Dr. Kay and myself, we want to go through this as quickly as we can, big stuff, good stuff. Some of it's a continuation from previous months. We continue to look at the Cincinnati Digital Academy regarding open enrollment statewide and the kinds of processes that might be needed there, as well as some procedural issues that CDA has mentioned to us that needed to be addressed. We had a continuation of a conversation we had in the full board meeting regarding reviewing board member compensation and the ways that the protocol calls for it, or the ways that we might be able to review it or change it. And that's going to continue into this next month as well. We also talked in terms of a couple of policies, not many of policies, some of which you'll see tonight. One is a Board Policy 6231 about appropriations and a spending plan that's coming out of Finance to Policy. We had, I think, the third month of talking about reviewing and redoing, if you will, our whistleblower protection. We also had some more discussion about employee ethics and wanting to make sure that we have that fully updated. Prohibition on harassment and intimidation and bullying, that will also continue to be discussed. Social media for district employees continues to be discussion. And there are a number of action items, as you will see in each of these items, for each of those. Social media for students and proposed new policy. Some of these needed to be carried over in order to have full committee discussion. Then there was also Property Inventory and Policy Accounting System. That was discussed, came over from Finance to Policy. I think we're voting on that this evening. We also did a follow-up discussion, looking at our own protocol and our own board policies regarding equity and excellence in education to try to help stimulate a discussion board-wise, based upon something in part that Vice President Jones had mentioned the month before in a board meeting, and that is the definition of equity. As the treasurer and the superintendent try to create a reasonable and attainable, but also visionary view of what does it mean to distribute in an equitable way the resources available to our district for our kids, we want to try to hook on to some major definitions, at least the board believes in. And we started there by looking at our policy regarding that. We also had student supervision, welfare, employee gifts, number of these that are listed there. Not yet the employee dress and grooming, but these first items in the lower part of this page, you'll be seeing tonight. And then also, we wanted to put to the administration that there's been a request from our wonderful LSDMCs to give some guidance by the administration to the role that they play in the anti-racism committees that exist by policy and by workbook regarding anti-racism at every school level. And I submit for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Are there any questions about the report from the Policy and Equity Committee? Okay. Do we have a report from the Health and Safety Committee from Mrs. Weinberg?
The Health and Safety Committee met on Monday, June 27th, at 4:00 p.m. We had several people in attendance, obviously the Health and Safety Committee members, administration staff, our CPS government liaisons, and of course, community members. The first topic that we discussed, we talked about vaping education pilot. Courtney Calvin from the Tobacco-Free Living Coordinator and Melina Harris, she's the interim public health educator, updated the committee about the INDEPT, which stands for the Intervention for Nicotine Dependence Education Prevention Tobacco and Health Program. The goal is to raise awareness in the community about the effects of vaping. Their report included the following information about the particular program. INDEPT is an alternative to suspension program offered as an option to youth who face suspension for violation of school and tobacco and e-cigarette policy. It's not intended to be used as a cessation program. The attendance is mandatory. The program is just to be used instead of an in-school or out-of-school suspension, detention, a ticket or fine, infraction, a demerit or court action. They also discussed that this could be administered as a one-on-one, but recommended this program in, as a group of eight to 10 students. Ms. Calvin and Ms. Harris informed the committee that the Cincinnati Health Department has been awarded a $50,000 grant from the Interactive for Health to help support the implementation of the INDEPT at Walnut Hills High School and Western Hills High School. The program is no cost to the district or students, and these two particular schools were chosen due to their disciplinary rates around vaping. Once the students complete this INDEPT program, they are strongly encouraged to participate in further cessation support through My Life, My Quit. We then moved on to our government liaison, in which we had Mr. Glover. He updated us on several different bills. Eric Kearney also informed us of importance of the meeting with board members in terms of government relation work. We also discussed the House Bill 583, and then also the Governor's Science Ohio House Bill 99, allowing teachers to carry firearms with 24 hours of training. We then kind of discussed a little bit more in detail about the different House bills. So for example, House Bill 583, the summary of that consisted of the bulk of education policymaking, in which this bill introduced to address a substitute teaching shortage, but eventually converted into really a lot of different other proposals, such as tutoring, vouchers, crowdfunding, cleanup, dyslexia support, and others. And then obviously, with House Bill 99, with that being passed, of course, CPS, we came out with our resolution in terms of how we will not be adhering to House Bill 99. And then we discussed in terms of an update on securing lead agencies for five of our remaining, remaining, excuse me, CPS schools. And we are working to make sure that they are securing a lead agency. And in other business, we discussed security in schools, in which our superintendent gave a report, really talking about how safety is very important and really trying to update and making sure that all principals, teachers, and staff, and of course, security will be on the same page. And other than that, we had no other business. We had no speakers for hearing of the public. And I submit my meeting notes for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Are there any questions about the report from the Health and Safety Committee? Okay, hearing none. We have one last committee report, which is from the Audit Committee. Will Ms. Bolton be presenting this?
Thank you.
Mr. Craig is volunteering, I see? Ms. Bolton, you got it.
Yes. Well, we were, this is the report of the Audit Committee. And for the members of the public, the Audit Committee is a community committee made up of experts, financial experts, that advise us and review us and think about us and give us some great direction. They were excited, as they had, over the last couple of months, been able to learn a great deal about our new superintendent, who has only about 10 more days until she's no longer new. But the introduction to our superintendent went well. She presented some of the issues that she's facing, her willingness to be here, and also impressed them with the fact that she'd already met with the chief audit executive. And that was great. We then had audit updates, and I really am not going to go through all of these, but they're extensive. I would refer the board members and the public to Page 2, which is summary of the status of recommendations dating all the way back to 2017 through 2020-22. And there's a wonderful number of the, on the chart, the number of recommendations, the ones that have been complete, the ones that are in progress. And I think it's important that we're that on it. There's been 133 recommendations, and 97 of them have been completed, and 36 of them are in process. And many of them, some of them, the major ones, are listed in the minutes. And many of them, some of them, the major ones, are listed in the minutes. We also talked extensively about risk management, risk assessment and methodology. And, and also from a standpoint of what other things need to be done as we face this new fiscal year. And indeed, the Audit Chair, Mr. Heldman, with the Second Vice Chair of Full House, asked that the committee vote to accept and approve the Chief Audit Executive goals for this coming year. Besides that, we also had the treasurer tell us that we're going to, she's preparing, as is the internal auditor person, Ms. Roberts, regarding a training session for the Audit Committee. And then also, there was great discussion, and some of it is singled out, regarding the Audit Committee's goals and work plan. And one of the themes in all of the discussion was more opportunity, perhaps to have more deliberation and more discussion among and between the members as we look towards the work plan being formulated. Then there was a part of the, they were interested very much in the budgets regarding every school. And also, the idea that the treasurer and the superintendent are working on kind of a school-by-school index for looking in terms of equity. Other business, they were interested in knowing when we would start the new strategic plan. They were very interested in hearing the superintendent's ideas regarding the organizational structure. They were interested too about the transportation update regarding the Metro contract and other district updates, including not just the Metro contract, but the preschool promise contract or master agreement. And then also, they did express interest as well in the ad hoc committee attendance boundaries, even just from a financial standpoint, rather than a programmatic piece. And then also expressed concern and interest and support for the district joining in with other urban districts regarding the Ed Choice voucher program. The meeting concluded, and I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Are there any questions about the Audit Committee report? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to accept the committee reports?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee reports are approved as presented. So, we're going to keep moving, and we are now on item B on our agenda, which is Governance Training Next Steps. And I want to invite in three guests that we have on the BlueJeans meeting. We have Cindy, we have Ray, and we have Leslie. Thanks for joining tonight, everyone. It's really wonderful to have you here. For folks who are either in person or watching online, our board has entered into a coaching relationship with the Council of Great City Schools on School Board Governance, which started with a two-day retreat in June. And we're going to be discussing a series of next steps tonight, and are really grateful to have all of you with us. Thank you. So just to roadmap this a little bit for folks. Oh, and for our, I don't know how easy it is to see for Cindy, Ray and Leslie. We do not have Mike with us this evening. He's on vacation. But we do have Kareem, Carolyn, myself, Eve, Brandon and Mary. So, three things we're going to try to cover this evening. First is an item about, I'll share more in a second, but ways to move the work forward. Two, we're going to talk about the implementation timelines that people received and had a chance to review. And then third, we're going to talk a little bit about what a new committee structure might look like. We talked about that at the retreat in June, but haven't, hadn't really picked that up since then. So on, on this first item, for moving the work forward, I'm a little bit concerned about how, how quickly or slowly we're taking next steps on the governance front. I'm thrilled that we had a retreat and that we're working with the council. I also know that people have just had a lot of questions, myself included. And it's hard to answer them all in a standard meeting with a packed agenda. So I was trying to figure out how to help the process move forward, you know, quickly, but also making sure that the most important issues really get vetted and worked through. And I was asking Cindy for a little bit of advice on this. And I also thought about, you know, what are the things that seem to work well during the superintendent search process? Part of what I think made that process work really well was the fact that Eve and I met with a search firm one, two times per week. It was a lot. I don't think we'll do quite that much here. And Eve, please tell me if you disagree, but I feel like we really had a chance to work through a lot, and sometimes we had to go talk to other board members and learn things or talk, but it, it takes time. But having a regular meeting with more than one board member to work through some of those things was really helpful. And so I wanted to try to do a similar setup here, where we had a few board point people who could meet with our coaches. Cadence to be determined. I don't think it will be twice a week. But, but to meet regularly with the coaches to work through and anticipate issues together and keep the work on track. So I've asked Carolyn and Brandon if they would be those point people here for this process. I asked Carolyn because she's vice president and because I think it's important that there be a representative who's served on this board for a while. I asked Brandon because I also think it's important to have a representative who is one of the new board members. Everybody who works with Brandon knows that he's also a very reasonable and thoughtful person. And unlike our other two new board members, he has not taken on a responsibility like chair in a committee yet. So this, this has not started. This has not started yet, but in the next week or so, I hope that we can get a recurring call set up for this group. Carolyn or Brandon, I know we had a chance to talk about this before, but anything you want to add or things you want to say?
No, not at this point.
Anything, questions from others? Or Cindy, I know you said that part of what's been helpful for other boards is to have a group like this that meets regularly. Anything you want to share?
Yeah, so just having a regular cadence of, of meetings to discuss whatever is coming up ahead of us as far as implementation or activities that need to be scheduled and just making sure that board members have their questions answered. That, that has definitely been a helpful thing. On the, on both timelines, both of your drafts, you'll see that we have, we have it right now marked as a once-per-month type of thing, but we can, we can do it more frequently as well, especially, especially as we're just getting the ball rolling. That might be a, be a wise idea. And, and I completely agree, getting something on, on the books shortly would be a good thing as well.
Thanks, Cindy. Carolyn, you did want to say something?
Yes, I, I wanted to ask, I think you and I spoke about this, but we didn't make a decision, wanted to bring it to the group. I made the suggestion that the superintendent may also want to be a part of that. And I don't know, you know, how people feel about that. I just thought it was important because of the, you know, of the work that needs to be done, that she be included in those calls. So maybe, I don't know if Cindy or the other folks from the council have any thoughts or board members have any thoughts about that or the superintendent?
Cindy, any, your take on that?
Yeah, so we, we actually have on the timelines as well, the superintendent listed as part of that monthly check-in. So at least once per month, I think it would be good to have the point people and superintendent involved if there are things that the, that need to be checked in on that the super, outside of that once-per-month meeting, we can, the superintendent wouldn't necessarily have to participate every time, but at least once per month would be, would be good.
I don't know if I have a, I'm flipping to first names, sorry, Superintendent Ray and Vice President Jones. Okay, that's great. Any other questions or concerns from the rest of the board? I hope this will be a way to keep things moving while also making sure we don't rush through issues that need to be vetted.
I guess I just have a question for clarity, and I really was paying attention. I'm just trying to understand. So we, let me start with my point. I don't think we have enough time to deliberate collectively. And I don't know where to find that, but I'm just saying, I don't, I think that that's the problem. And I, and I agree that maybe breaking things off into small sections may be helpful, but the problem of whole group deliberations is not being fixed to me. And so I, I just caution that if we have separate, small groups doing work, where is the time for effective deliberation? And what I mean by that is being able to have efficient time to discuss, understand, collect thoughts, not rushed. And I'm not suggesting, listen, I don't want any more meetings, but if, if it has to be, I would like for them to be effective and efficient and not just feeling rushed as, as another checkoff item. So I'm just making that formal declaration publicly.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. And I, I will share that I truly don't know what the answer is. I think this is something that I hope will make a difference, that I think we should try. And if it's not getting the job done, we'll try something different. Ms. Bolton?
Just very quickly, I think it's a good choice, and I think it is needed in order to keep the work moving. And I think Kareem is correct about, it doesn't preclude the full board discussion. And, and these two folks especially, I think would be more than cognizant of that and respectful of that need. So I think it's a good choice for the two, and, and indeed, the whole board has to be discussing. And I think periodic involvement with the superintendent as well makes sense, and the treasurer, very frankly. And I, I, you know, I think that's important as well. So I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so that is item one of three. The second one is about the two timelines that you all, you all board members received. The, they are similar with one major difference. The, and the issue between the two is, both of them ensure that we do meaningful engagement with the community about what the goals and guardrails should be. The, the one that's labeled Draft 1 uses as a starting point the community engagement that the board did during the superintendent's search, but then goes back to the community for new community engagement once we've come up with a draft of the goals and guardrails that we're considering. The second one basically starts with a, with a whole new set of stakeholder engagement before writing the draft, and then goes back again afterwards. Genuine pros and cons to both. I think, I wanted to give Cindy a minute, or anybody from your team, Cindy, maybe just single you out, but I think had a, a pretty strong perspective on, on some of the advantages with the first one. And I wanted to give you all some airtime on that.
Sure. So, as Ben mentioned, the first one does use the superintendent, the information gleaned from the superintendent's search from the community engagement that was done during that process. The things of note, and I, on the second draft, the things highlighted in yellow are, they note the differences between the two drafts. One thing also that I want to make sure and point out, if you go to Draft 2,
And Cindy, it may take a second to, for people to grab those.
Oh, sure.
I don't know that people have hard copies, but they're, she's referencing the link, the attachments. Some of our board members are very prepared. Some of us are looking at our computers. But I'll give you a second to grab those if you want.
Sure. And while, and while I'm giving you a second, one thing I, I do want to address from the previous conversation. When we have these check-in meetings with the point people, it's not to do the work of the board. It is to organize around the implementation timeline and make sure that things are getting scheduled, to organize the activities for the coming month, to perhaps share that information so that those things can get organized and scheduled. It's not, it's, it is not to make, you know, the, the work will become, will be a full board process as far as any of the decision-making, drafting of goals and guardrails, those types of things. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified as well.
Thanks, Cindy. So I think you can keep going whenever you want.
Okay, so, so what is of note in Draft 2, when you get to July and the board adopting the annual budget? Because the budget process will have started prior to goals and guardrails adoption, what that may mean is that there may not be ability for complete alignment for the fiscal year 24 budget cycle. So in other words, if, if the board hasn't written the goals and guardrails in a time that allows the superintendent and CFO to resource for them in the FY '24 budget cycle, then what that may do is create another bridge year before you are able to fully implement a superintendent evaluation process that's based on the goals and guardrails that you've adopted or that you will adopt. The other thing I know from the last conversation, when we were here last, and, and the, the idea, and we will support you in whichever timeline you determine is necessary to, for the board to, to go through this process, to represent your community, the vision and values, and to be able to draft these goals and guardrails and do all the work needed. The one thing that I, I would encourage is that as you are thinking about the initial community engagement process, I think the question that, that you might be asking yourself is, is the superintendent evaluate, superintendent's search process information, is that information gleaned sufficient? And had, and was the breadth of community engagement sufficient enough also for you to start this process? I think that's, that rather than actual, the actual makeup of the board at the time that that happened is probably the, the question to surface, only because the community sees the board as the board and the board did a community engagement process within the last nine months, if I'm, I'm correct. So just wanted to put that out there as you're thinking about this. And so those, those are kind of the, the high-level points that I would make.
Cindy, that's great. I appreciate all of the work that you and your team did in putting together the two proposals and you all being with us here tonight. I think just from some of the emails I receive from people, my hypothesis is there's going to be some disagreement about whether we go with Draft 1 or Draft 2. But we do have some time to talk about it, and we have the coaches with us if people have questions. So I think what, what I want to do is create a minute here for people to ask any questions they want of the coaches or, or of each other. And then just ask if people have a motion or motions they want to make. And then we'll, we'll see where we are. But do people have questions for Cindy or Ray or Leslie while we have them? Ms. Bolton?
I think- I think Cindy's right to point out that we're going to have kind of parallel efforts, whether it's about the budget, or whether it's about the guardrails and, and the governance, and also a strategic plan. I don't know if you can do all three of those things. So, my question is, we know we have to have a budget, and we know we're engaged for this governance discussion for this coming year. I'm very supportive of using, at least initially, the information that the Alma Group got for us. I think it was broad enough and deep enough that it can inform the early process, but I do think we have to reengage. But as we reengage, my question is, when we reengage, is it, is that reengagement part of only the governance effort, or is it also going to be part of our strategic planning engagement? Because if, if not, I mean, we, we have to come to grips with whether or not we're going to have a strategic plan, because we know we've committed to governance, and we know we have to have a budget. I think we can do all three if we find ways to interface it. And I would hope that we can do that, because it, we'd lose another year if we don't find a way to interface it. But does your reengagement at the, for that one proposal, using Alma's stuff at the beginning, but reengaging, can that, is that expansive enough under your framework, that it also counts sort of as a, a strategic plan effort, or is it more narrow related to governance?
So, what we would ca-
I don't mean narrative in a pejorative way. I didn't mean that, that way.
I, I think I understand what you're asking. The way we would look at this is that developing the goals and guardrails are step one of the, that is the board's primary involvement in a strategic planning process. That is prioritizing for the district, prioritizing, setting the priorities for where you want the district to go. So, it's capturing that vision of the community through those student outcome goals, the one to five student outcome goals, and then the values of the community by writing those one to five guardrails, the, what you don't want to happen while the superintendent is working toward achieving those goals. So, the community engagement piece, using, in draft one, where you, where you would be using the community engagement information from your superintendent's search process, when you go back out to the community and that, you would be going out to ensure that you have captured their, the vision and values through those goals and guardrails. So, getting their feedback as to whether or not this is, this indeed is where they want to see the district go toward your ultimate vision of student success, where that next chunk that you're going to bite off in the next three to five years, whichever amount of time that you would set those goals for. The actual, then, once the board has ensured that and adopts those goals and guardrails, then that is when those are handed to the superintendent who, then, whose job then is to operationalize and implement them. So, the superintendent, along with the CFO, as, in her capacity, would, would be aligning the resources, the superintendent would be determining the strategies, and, and creating the plan by which she is going to work toward the achievement of those goals. So, the board wouldn't, would, that's where the board would pivot to their governance processes, to preparing, to be ready to monitor progress toward those goals, and to do the board work around, around setting the context for achievement of the goals and guardrails. So, the strategic planning work, from there, the, the board would be the, where are we going? And that would be their community engagement, and the superintendent would be the, how are we going to get there? Part of the strategic planning process. So, the how are we going to get there while also not getting there, not using, or by honoring the guardrails, I'm sorry. So, how are we going to get there while still honoring the guardrails? The superintendent would then have the authority to, or have the ability to engage community as she saw fit.
Cindy, you, you got some affirmative head nods from Eve. I think, I think she feels good on her question.
Okay, good. I can't, I can't see the-
You can't see anybody, I know. You're guessing. I'll try to-
Good. All right.
Yeah. Your mic wasn't on, Eve. Now, now she's making jokes, but I think we're okay. I know, Vice President Jones had another-
Yes. Given what Cindy, how Cindy just explained this, I'm of the opinion, in my personal opinion, and, and I am prepared, what I'd like to do just to get this moving is to put a motion on the floor. I think the way I understand it, what I hear Cindy saying is that community engagement happens throughout this process, in one way or the other. What, what we're talking about is utilizing, and, well, first, let me put it in a motion, and then I won't go in there. But I want to put a, a motion-
Can we get there in one second? I promise. I just, I, I want, if people have questions for the, for the-
Well, you, you can discuss the motion if you want to. You want to finish this discussion-
That's fine. That's, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I was just trying to-
Yep. I, I support, I support the-
So, so the motion is, I, I would like to propose, or motion, that we move with Cindy's recommendation being that we have the shorter timeline using the Alma information from the superintendent's search as the, the base of our information, that helps guide us in the goals and, and guardrails. Then, so that's the shorter version of the timeline, meaning we're not engaging in a whole new engagement process. However, we recognize that when we do the strategic plan farther down the road, we will do, we have to do more community engagement. But that is farther, that is down the timeline, and I don't know, I can't see the months in one there. So, the, so the motion is to do the shorter version timeline using the data, the information that we already had from the search.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Is there a second on that? Thanks, Ms. Bolden. So, now, if there's other, other discussion or questions for Cindy, or the, or Ray, Leslie, you're here. It's so nice to have you. If, if you have anything you want to share, I want to make sure you get a chance to share too. Other, other questions? Comments?
I, I just want to make, this is Dr. Moffett, I just want to make a comment, because I, I think that there's some confusion on what Cindy said and how your motion sounded. Cindy said that the engagement of the strategic plan was the superintendent. That's not how we've done that. And so, your motion was confusing, and it was not in alignment with what she just said. So, I, I believe that there should be a vote on either draft one or draft two, not taking into account engagement, strategic plan, or any of that at the moment, because I think that the way that you've described it is not what she said. And so, we, we have not done our engagement, we have not done our strategic planning the way that she's describing it. We have, as, it's been a board, ad hoc committee, et cetera, et cetera. So, the board was very, very instrumental in that, and that's not how she's describing the process, irrespective of whichever one of those. So, I think that there is, I think that there, the issue is, do we adopt draft one, which is shorter than draft two, and then we can separately identify how that engagement looks. But I don't want to, what I heard you say was, and maybe I'm wrong, and you can definitely clarify, what I heard you say was that we take the shorter plan using the engagement that was already conducted for the superintendent's search, and then we engage later on for the strategic plan. And I don't think that that's what she said.
Okay. Maybe I need to ask for, because I think that's what I am saying. I, I think, I think that I'm agreeing with where she is. The strategic plan process, we, we have to define. I don't think the superintendent's going to do that in isolation of the board, is, if that, if I'm understanding how you're presenting it.
I think it's the, it's, Cindy's going to tell me if I get this wrong, but it's like the part of the strategic plan that the board's going to be very involved in-
Yes.
-is figuring out what are those priorities-
Yes.
-that matter most to the community. And those priorities are going to get translated into things like goals and guardrails.
Right.
And that's what this process is going to help us do.
Yeah.
There, there's another part to the strategic plan, which is figuring out how in the world do we get there? And that part of the strategic plan is going to be what the superintendent is charged with figuring out.
Right.
So, is, is that what you were trying?
Yes, yes. But, but what I'm saying for the purpose of the motion, is so that we can move forward, is to accept the, the, the first recommendation-
I got it.
-on the shorter timeline-
I got it.
-to accept the information from the community engagement process of the superintendent's search.
Thank you. I got, Mr. Craig has not spoken yet, and we'll get Ms. Bolden.
So, I just wanted to make sure we're also understanding something, which is, I think we're all saying the same things, but maybe saying them different ways, and I'm saying it differently. But in draft one and draft two have basically actually the same timeline for completion. What we're really talking about is whether or not we want to add another cycle of community engagement in the beginning, and then move everything back several months, or a couple of months really, to be able to do that, or whether or not we want to bring the, the steps earlier in the process, and then give us more time throughout the end of it, to develop the last parts of their, kind of building the, the guidance going into the next year. And I think, so draft one would be that idea that we would utilize the information we've already received, going through, doing the next steps of building the goals of the district, receiving additional community engagement and feedback, using that to, to principal out those goals that would be, what would be utilized as part of building a strategic plan that we would give, and work with the superintendent to give that guidance on, and then superintendent's task, again, with continuing communication and continuing, and our own set of outreach and what, whatever is necessary within the district and, and whatnot to develop. How do you actually do the things we're setting as goals to do? Is always going to be a part of that process, whether we go with draft, that, that last part is always going to be a part of the process, where we go with draft two or draft one. I think it's really about whether or not we feel we have enough information from those early surveys that were done to say, let's go forward with some general ideas and concepts that we can build right now, and bring it back to the community to say, hey, what do you think about this? What are your feedback on that? How do you see this as a goal of the district? And really giving them a chance to provide us some guidance, because I think it also guides what we will ultimately do with our connection with both building our budgets, both building that equity effort that I think Superintendent Wright and Treasurer Wagner are working hard to develop. But also, we'll be in alignment with a lot of the things that we've already been doing, to build the district up into a consistent process that can be replicated year after year. So, I think if we're doing draft one or draft two, it's really still the same time frame, more of where we implement different parts to it at, and whether or not we add that additional outreach in the beginning.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolden?
Yes. I, I think in many ways, we are all saying the same thing. However, I do want to point out, from our, our time together in the retreat, there was a point of questioning regarding the, the actual engagement for the strategic plan. The last strategic plan, and I think this is what Dr. Kay is talking about, and I think this is something we have not reached consensus about. And that is the nature of our strategic planning engagement. The way it was sort of presented to us at the retreat was that the, the superintendent, obviously, is very much a part of it, and the treasurer, very much a part of it, but the last, the last engagement we did for our strategic plan, and I think there's been three since I've been on the board, there was great community involvement. And it was seen as community involvement, not necessarily administrative-driven, or even board-driven, as much as it was community. Because sometimes we need to interface or not interchange the word board and community in this discussion. So, I think I'm still supportive of Vice President Jones's motion, and I'm happy to second it, but I would, I don't know if it's reasonable to add a caveat or a somewhat revision, that we do the timeline of the, as we, as she has suggested, but that, that there's an additional sentence that we then determine the manner in which the next strategic plan engagement, or the next engagement is determined. Because I don't think we've reached consensus as to how we want to do that engagement.
I think that's right.
And I, I think that is a consensus where we can move forward, because it seems like people are willing to use the early data, and they're willing to get that quicker timeline, but save it so that with our superintendent, and our treasurer, and whomever, and the community, we can figure out the nature of that engagement. So, I would offer that as an amendment to the, to the motion, to see if we could find unanimity and be able to move ahead. It's because we just haven't determined all that yet.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. I think we'll, we'll call the vote in a second, but is there anybody that wants to add anything or ask any questions?
Does the motion maker accept the revision?
Yes. But somebody else is going to have to restate the motion, because we had, you know, I think, Brandon, I think you, you sort of captured it with Eve's addition to-
So, if I may take a stab at this, President Lindy, I think what-
It's his first task as board, as point person.
What happens if you're thrown onto committees, right? What Vice President Jones is offering out is that we would follow the timeline of draft one, with the friendly amendment from Board Member Bolden, to add the caveat that we also still work to determine the appropriate community engagement model that would be utilized in our efforts to both work within our governance, but then also a discussion with regards to the, the community engagement in preparation for strategic, what's a, what's a, strategic plan. Why am I forgetting the foreword?
Yeah, that name, right there.
The stra, the strategic plan, so.
Okay. So, with, with that friendly amendment, Ms. Hughes, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolden?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay. That was item two of three. And I think we're going to have a, just a judgment call to make together tonight about how much of this third topic we want to try to do. I thought at, at a minimum, we could have a five to 10-minute discussion, or we might be able to land the thing tonight. But this, we, we had a, we had, there was a lot of energy during our retreat of moving from four committees to two committees. I don't want that energy to dissipate. I think it was a good discussion. I think people had really good ideas about why. I don't candidly know how close or far away we are from knowing exactly what the two committees are, and exactly what the scope of them would be. I think the superintendent's perspective, to me at least, matters a great deal here. I also know that Vice President Jones has a lot of ideas that also seem great, and I know she's planning on talking about them with the superintendent, but their meeting is tomorrow. So, I, I thought, I thought maybe we could, if you're open to it, Vice President Jones and Superintendent Wright, just to hear a little bit about kind of what you're thinking, and we could figure out, it might be that we're already there, and if we're already there, I would love to move this to closure. If it becomes clear after five minutes or so that there's just more work to do here, we will, we, our, our point people will figure out a plan, not to make the decision, but for, for, for when we can sequence this and get the discussions done, so that we keep moving it forward. So, either of you, Superintendent Wright, or, or Vice President Jones, want to share?
You can go first. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Lindy. So, I think the consensus for some of the conversations, and kind of where I've come to in terms of what I would suggest, or what my feedback would be, would be that the, right now, we currently have a monthly meeting scheduled for Cal. So, if we would look at, you know, if we're continuing to have the Cal session, and do the academic work through that session, where it becomes a place where we can give information, we can discuss information, we can talk about what's happening academically, and then the other two committees that we know that we have to have, or- or, you know, that we really need to really have in terms of thinking about where we are with policy, policy and finance, in terms of the other two. And I think that that was the conversation that Vice President and I had as well.
And if I could add to that, and I had initially wanted, because the Student Achievement Committee is coming up for a meeting, and because we're requesting data through, for that committee, through the superintendent, I just thought I would take the opportunity when I meet with her tomorrow to kind of update her on my thoughts about it. I'm kind, we're kind of aligned in how we see things in terms of the structure. But I am reminded of the conversation, the discussion that we had when we did our first meeting with the Council of Great City Schools. And we were bouncing around ideas about what these committees look like. And when we, if you recall, for those members are older tenured members, not older, but are older tenured members.
Older works.
Okay. We, you recall that we added health and safety because of what we were dealing with with COVID, I think. It was added a few years ago. It was becoming clear to me in student achievement that basically what we were doing is updating. You know, that the real work couldn't happen unless we, you know, got staff involved and there was so much overlap with other committees and what have you. And I found myself as chair of that committee really trying to, I don't want to say find work to do, but trying to find decision points. Well, what is it that student achievement can do? So when we had our meeting with the council and started having this conversation, the superintendent's ideas resonated with me that this is an appropriate time for us to even consider how we bring, if we're focusing on student outcomes, which is what student achievement is supposed to be, then maybe we need to change or reshape how we do that business. And so the idea of taking it to Cal and having Cal be sort of a, I don't even want to call it Cal, but it's a committee of the whole, but it would primarily do everything that we want to do in terms of presenting all data, sharing all information related to student outcomes and student achievement. Meaning, we wouldn't necessarily need to have a separate student achievement committee. We wouldn't necessarily need to have a health and safety committee. And then it resonated with me that Ms. Bolton said, well, policy and finance are the two legal requirements. And that makes sense for the board. That makes sense for the work that we do. And so I'm just putting it out there as a thought. And like I said, I hadn't had a chance to talk with her. We'll talk with her tomorrow because student achievement's coming up. But it would be, you know, a good idea, I think, for us to consider that structure, so.
So it sounds like I didn't plan this, like I didn't know this was going to happen. But it sounds like what you're suggesting is very aligned.
Very much aligned.
It's the exact same thing. I just used the term academic instead of student achievement.
Okay.
But it's the same thing.
So I want to invite other board member perspective in. Like I'm all for fewer committees, not just because of people's time, but just to focus our work more effectively. I think this sounds like a wonderful thing to try. But I would love to hear from Ms. Weinberg, Mr. Craig, Ms. Bolden, Dr. Moffett. If you don't have a perspective, it's fine, but, yep.
Just to add a couple of thoughts, I am fine with decreasing our amount of committees. My only question would be in terms of, since I am the chair for health and safety, would health and safety be, I guess, an opportunity? Would I be able to discuss that in the Cal meeting and bring some of those concerns up? If it had to deal with student outcomes, that would just be my only concern. But I would be okay, of course, selecting two out of the four committees, decrease down to.
Thanks, Ms. Weinberg. Ms. Bolden?
I think the suggestion that Superintendent and the Vice President are making makes sense. I was worried about, I was ready to eliminate all but the ones we had to have, finance and policy, because that's what law requires. But then I really started to worry about the student achievement piece. And very frankly, I think even logistically, it makes sense to make that be what used to be the Cal. Largely because it's a little bit earlier in the day. And when you start doing that, if I recall, olden times, when you get down into it, you really are not just having senior staff reporting when you're really reporting on student achievement and growth. You have other folks that are, you know, not just only the senior staff, but also people at the ground level. And I think that makes sense to do that at four. I think there's parts of the health and safety that need to be absorbed in some way.
Yes.
And I think you guys can figure that out for the work plan. And I think that would be a great idea. The other last thing, though, is that this is normal. When the facilities master plan was done, you got rid of the facilities committee. So this is a really normal process to go through. And pray God, we're not going to go through COVID. But if that happens again in the way it did, then you reinstitute it. But I think this would be great.
Yeah. One final comment around that, and I don't mean this as a criticism. So please, policy people and finance people, don't take it that way. But I think what we're.
We will, but it's okay.
What we have seen already is this trend. You know, policy overlays everything. So when we're talking about a lot of the program pieces that policy has already absorbed, it's already happening. And so it just makes prac, and then you won't hear me yell about you all taking our assignments.
That's right.
I know. So, but it just makes practical sense for us. It also decreases the amount of time that we're splitting ourselves. Now, I don't know what will happen to the couple of people who need committee assignments. I don't know. We'll have to figure that piece out.
So it sounds like this was an easier conversation than I thought it might be. Oh, Mr. Craig, sorry.
Yeah.
I spoke too soon.
Yes, I'm going to destroy it all. No. I think we were moving in the right direction. I do think we may need some time still to decide where some of those parts get absorbed into. Because I think there's some aspects of both student achievement and the health and safety that are really reflective of things that were priorities at a time period that are still priorities now. And so I think moving them into the Cal can be done. But I think it's still something we may need to take more time to decide on how that's done. And that may also just require us to go back and look at the work plans for each of those committees and address what's within those work plans that would go where. So I don't know if that's a time to do that today, personally.
No.
But we can have that conversation and do it.
Well, I'm talking to the superintendent tomorrow.
I think that's, I agree with you. I cut you off.
Wait, can I give my opinion? Were you asking for suggestions? You didn't ask me.
Dr. Moffett, please.
Just left me out again. So I do agree with Brandon, and I was going to suggest that I don't think that's something that we should decide on today. I do want us to look at the work plans. And I think personally, safety is a huge issue, safety within our schools. I almost am very nervous about eliminating that committee. But I do think that there is some redundancy, and to go down to, to reduce the number of committees makes sense. But I also want to be cognizant of the fact that we need to look at what we are charged to do with those committees and then put them in the appropriate space accordingly. And I also would like to have Board Member Morosky's opinions. So it's nothing that I would want to vote on today. But I do think that there is consensus to the act of reducing committees, for sure. But what that looks like, I'm not comfortable saying that without a little bit more data.
As a proposal, Ms. Wright, you look like you had a thought.
The only thing that I would add, I just want to, and I think someone said this earlier, but just making sure that we are, as you're discussing what's in the work plans, that we are doing that with the lens of board work and superintendent work. That's my only request in terms of that. Because as we look at some of the committees, much of what's done in some of the committees, if we are following the guidance that we're being provided by our coaching team from the Council of Great City Schools, there has been a bridge between board work and superintendent work in terms of that. And so some of the work that the board is actually doing through those committees, that's really why you have me here. And so I just think that as you're thinking through those processes and what those work plans are, that would just be my recommendation that we do so through that lens. If we're going to, you know, we're committing, we want to do that through the lens of thinking about what those two things really mean.
I think this is great and has been a very good and important discussion. I'm actually pleasantly surprised at how much unanimity there was about direction. And I agree that there's more work that needs to get done. And I think having Mike is important, particularly because he's chair of a committee. The thing I want to try to land before we close with our coaches is just how we're going to move that forward. I am skeptical that working through those kind of details in a meeting setting like this is going to be the best way to do it. I feel like if we could get a group of people together, I was going to suggest the chairs of the committees and the superintendent to build together a proposal that they could then share at a meeting like this, and then everybody could ask questions about it. I'm not tied to that. I just worry that there is so much in those work plans, and there's so much we have to get done in these meetings. I worry that if we don't have some way to work through those issues in a different setting, it's just going to take a long time. I also could be wrong about that. I'm open. I think the win for me is that we're clear about how we're going to move it forward. I'm not tied to one particular way of doing it. Eve?
I would, I think we can do that. What is required is that we would be changing the protocol. Protocol has to then be revised and has to be adopted. And the sooner we can do that, the better. And I think it makes sense to have the.
You mean the policy?
The protocol. Yeah, the policy, bylaws.
Bylaws, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I use the old term.
Okay.
Because that's where it is. Now, rather than wait for six months and January 1 to redo the work plans as we normally would do, I think if we gather a group, a subcommittee or whatever, to get through the bylaws and bring it back for a vote, I think that's the way we could do it. That can be done, you know, before the end of August.
And that group, I was, I'm not tied to the group I mentioned.
I think the chairs are a good where to go.
That'd be four people, so we would notice that meeting, you know, like in that. And it would be open to anybody, like if you wanted to go, go. But that we'd have representation of the head of each of those committees and representation from the superintendent. And any concerns about, so we'll make that a next step. We'll get that at the end.
Put that in an assignment, please.
I'll do that. Okay. Any last, coaches, Ray, Leslie, nice to have you. Thank you for leading us here, and I'm sorry, we didn't make better use of the two of you.
We did not need it. We would have said the exact same thing Cindy said, and I just appreciate being a part of the meeting. So thank you for letting us be a part.
Yeah, nice to see you all again. And I just want to compliment you all on this meeting tonight. It was really refreshing, and it's beautiful to see you all come to these great decisions in a very quick manner. Thank you.
Anything, Cindy, we haven't said that is important for us to say?
Um, I think, I don't think so, but one thing I would offer up if you would like is as you are working, as your work on the committees unfolds, if there's any, anything you need us for, as your committee of committee heads and the superintendent work through that process, we would be happy to be a resource for you in that respect. And especially as you're thinking through the board work, superintendent work aspect of paring down those committees and what is focused into the committee of the whole. As far as the other things that were decided tonight, we will be ready to support on the implementation timeline draft one. And as soon as the point people are ready to meet, we'll be anxious to do so and get a little, and start getting some of those assignments and some of that work going forward scheduled. And actually, Ben, there is one more thing that we did forget. Thank you to everyone who has filled out the board self-evaluation. That, the next steps with that will also be coming down the pike.
Eve has her marked up copy here at the table with her, so.
Excellent. Four people to help me.
We got it.
That's all right. And now you've got it. Now you'll be able to help other people, and we'll be calling you to assist.
So thank you all so much for joining us tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, or if you have other things you'd like to do, we understand. But thank you very much.
Welcome. See you all.
Thank you all very much.
Good to see you.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
All right, so we're moving on to item H, which is resolutions. So Mike is not here this evening. Is there somebody who's willing to present his resolutions?
Policy people.
They're coming out of policies. It could be either Dr. Moffett or Ms. Bolden. I can rotate. Maybe we start with Dr. Moffett, and then we'll, and the next mic will be Ms. Bolden. So, Dr. Moffett, would you present resolution one?
So I submit a resolution amending board policy 3213, student supervision and welfare. I submit it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Ms. Bolden, would you present number two?
It's my understanding that the next one is a resolution rescinding board policy 4213, student supervision and welfare.
Nope.
No, well, I mean, we can go to that one.
We can go there, though.
So the one I have is amending 3214, professional employee gifts.
I would also ask, and I've tried to do that before at General Counsel, I think we're missing some policies in this, in this, I mean, we don't want to add them now, but there's a number where we're rescinding, amending, and then it is the new policy or what have you. So I just, if we can look at it. But I'm happy to read off of the, amend, off of the agenda instead of what I have in front of me. I'll retract that. A resolution amending board policy 3214, professional employee gifts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any discussion? Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Dr. Moffett, would you do the third one, please?
I submit a resolution rescinding board policy 4213, student supervision and welfare. I submit it as written.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Ms. Bolden, number four?
A resolution rescinding board policy 4214, classified employee gifts.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion? Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Ms. Bolden, you're on a tear here. Number five?
Number five. A resolution amending board policy 7450, property inventory.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Last one, Ms. Bolden, number six.
A resolution amending board policy 7455, accounting system for fixed assets.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Hughes?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, moving from H to I, Superintendent of Schools, we have some retirements this evening?
We do. I will be quick. Yes, good evening, everyone. We have a small list of retirements, first from our certificated personnel. We have Leslie McCarthy, a teacher at College Hill. And next, we have Randy Swanko, a teacher at Mount Washington. In terms of our civil service personnel, we have two retirees. Um, in terms of our civil service personnel, we have two retirees, well, excuse me, three. First, we have Trina Kelly, a paraprofessional, Rhonda Murphy, a lunchroom manager, Fanya Sheshi, a paraprofessional. And please excuse me if I have mispronounced any names. We would like to thank them for their years of service and dedication to the Cincinnati Public School and, of course, the students, and we wish them well and happy retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Superintendent Wright, we have the recommendations on Board Docs. Are these the recommendations for this evening?
With the exception of Recommendation Three, yes.
Do we have a motion to accept the Superintendent's recommendations with that change?
I move that we accept the Superintendent's recommendations with the change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
This, uh, I'm not sure. Nine. I have a, a question on, I'm not sure if it's IB schools or if that was in the Treasures. What schools? Uh, yes. Page nine, letter L, but International Baccalaureate Curriculum. Are these all from Robert School? Robert's Academy?
I would actually have to cross-reference that for the schools because we have Roberts, but we also have a program at Dater as well. So I'll need to cross-reference that.
That would be, I mean, I'm obviously in favor of it, I just didn't know if it, both schools were being covered.
Right, so I'll, I'll verify.
Thank you. And then I wanted to ask, and, and if I could, whether or not it would be in the, or where we are, the status as a follow-up to athletics, the status regarding the additional ADs for the district, as to whether or not they're going to be district employees or are we using, as well as we have before, the use of ABC?
Yes, current, currently, currently there were three additions and they were included as a part of the ABC budget for this year. I think it would take a longer conversation for us moving forward about returning the ADs to the district, but for now, there were, there were three, and those three, the, those three were included in the contract for ABC.
Great. And then I don't know that we're, and maybe people can help me with that, but I, I didn't see this year's version regarding the ABC contract. I think we have a five-year contract with them and we annually do that. Maybe that's in the Treasures report or we?
I would have to verify that as well.
I didn't see it there and I didn't know. I know it's a, we, I think it was last year that we went through, made it be a five-year representative.
I will verify that.
Okay.
And if I'll also add, because of the request, I think, two board meetings ago, where even the contracts that we had extended for a period of time, we still brought them back. If it has not come back, it is the expectation that we would bring it back.
Okay, great. That's, that's, that's good. Appreciate it. That's what I needed some clarification on. And then I know we did talk in Finance about the need for athletic trainers.
Correct.
And then is that the length of the contract that was part of, are we looking into that or?
Correct. And, and I'll actually ask Mr. Hoyne if he'll follow up with this piece because he did the, the next steps for us on this one.
Thank you, Chairman Superintendent.
Didn't run fast enough, Ben.
Good evening. Yes, the athletic trainers are included in the Treasures, the Treasures Report. It's with Children's Hospital, a contract that, consistent with the RFP, would be two years, but consistent with all Board, multi-year contracts will be subject to annual appropriation by the Board.
If I could, Mr. President, so that does mean if we are going to be telling Children's Hospital that there is, they would be able, they can assume, or they can, yeah, assume that it is a two-year contract, because I know they're having some issues. They don't want to have to hire temporary folks for, and athletic seasons are coming up, so if it is two-year-
We have been in communication with- That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other discussion on the Superintendent's recommendations? Ms. Hughes, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Mrs. Weinberg? Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Moving to the Treasures Report, Item J. Ms. Hughes, we have the revised Treasures Report in front of us here. Is this the recommendation for this evening?
Yes, I am submitting the Treasures Report written as is, with the exception of the General Counsel, paragraph under section-
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept this Treasures Report with the modification that Ms. Hughes just mentioned?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I think there's a correction that needs to be made. I think we mentioned it in Finance and it's on page seven. It's in this wonderful list of, of Resource Coordination and our new partners and what have you. It's the bottom of page seven, I think, even with the revisions. And it's for the Gaskins and Associates. And I think there's just a typo or something's been left out regarding the 360,000 and there's only one Resource Coordinator listed. Do we know what others, other schools or?
Yes, so that actually was an error. There are a total of five schools, I believe, that are included in that number. Also, as a follow, in that overall number, they picked up one of our school, two of our schools that did not have Resource Coordinators for this year. So that's how the number was increased. I can get the actual list of who the schools were, but I did do the follow-up after Finance Committee. The other follow-up after Finance Committee was, were probably a longer discussion for later, but the LSDMCs are the ones that provide feedback on the individual lead agencies. And in reviewing the, the data that's, that's come back from that, there was not an evaluation done for Gaskins, but there was also not a follow-up to get, to make sure that we had evaluations of all the lead agencies. So that's where we will begin in, as the school year starts, so that throughout the year, we can have those conversations, put any lead agencies that there are concerns about on some level of notice, conversation that we're doing with them, so that we make sure before there is an expansion, there's clarity around the quality of services being provided.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that mean Superintendent Wright, there needs to be a modification to the, to the report?
Yes, and I need to get the names, the other names of the schools. Yes, there's, I think there's only one listed here, but there were a total of five.
Okay, I was just trying, can, can we vote on what's here or do we, we need to change it?
So the number is 325,000 or 360,000, but the number of schools listed is not-
That's correct. So the number is accurate. We pay $65,000 per, so the amount is correct. The list of schools was truncated, so there, all the schools weren't listed.
Okay. Would you, would you prefer for us to vote on that tonight or, or to vote on the next one?
If we need to add the schools in, then we can hold it until the next time, so that we update the report to add the schools. If we don't need to add the schools, but we, we just know that for clarity, they're not getting that amount for covering one school location, then we're fine to move forward.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I was going to take the job.
Me too.
Ms. Weinberg had a question.
That actually was my question, so thank you Superintendent Wright for clearing that up. I was going to bring up the same exact question. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or discussion on the Treasures Report? Dr. Moffett?
I have a question. Under Payments, it says multiple vendor order 325,000 Professional Development Fund, Staff Reimbursements. Can you explain? Somebody?
What page?
Page eight on that Treasures Report.
So that probably means, and I'm not certain, but it probably means that we have multiple staff that are attending professional development and it's easier for us to just submit one multi-vendor contract and we pay from that multi-vendor rather than submitting individual reimbursements for the staff.
Okay.
To attend professional development.
Multiple vendors for a total of 325,000.
Correct.
Okay. And then the last, my last question was that there are five RFPs that were on, that were submitted. Do we happen to have a review of that RFP process? I know RFPs at the last meeting were kind of put on hold, that we could look at the process, look at the diversity of selection of vendors. Do we have any clarity of that? How we got to those five vendors? Total's a couple million dollars. I'm not sure if that's from, is, is that from me or? Um, I don't remember exactly. It's on the Treasures Report, but the, but the RFP process was to be reviewed, I think, by both. So I'm not exactly certain who wants to answer it. I just kind of want some clarity.
I, I will. So at this point, it's not a process that has changed at this point. It's a conversation that we've had. We've met with our procurement department to review the process that we currently use. As we begin to go into our next cycle in terms of next school year, then we will begin to see changes and revisions to the overall process. So up until this time, there hasn't been a change in the process that was used previously.
Okay, so those, those vendors on the Treasures Report, or that got those RFPs, didn't go through anything new?
Correct. They would have gone through the regular processes from before.
Okay.
Which means they had to be reviewed, they had to be reviewed by a committee and then selected.
Thanks, Dr. Moffett. Any other last questions?
I have some.
Ms. Bolton?
The crossing guards that are page seven, that's just for this one year, the nearly million dollars for just one year. And have we entered into an agreement that's longer than one year for the crossing guards?
So we haven't done an update yet for the crossing guards. We, this one is the one year and it also included the update for the salary.
Okay, so this is just the one year, there's not an extended agreement? And then I just have a, maybe this is General Counsel question. And again, I'm really pleased with so many of the Resource Coordinator, Lead Agencies. Question about Walnut, regarding the foundation, the Alumni Foundation being, is, they're going to be the lead agency? I, I thought that we had, there was all this big thing about separation between foundations and schools. I mean, they certainly do a whole bunch for the school. I just didn't, having lived through the SCPA experience.
I, I'm not sure. I, I was not aware. Did you have a, a legal question about that or the, just, I, I was not aware that the foundation was going to be the Resource?
Yeah, the, it's, uh, page seven, the agreements, Walnut Hills Alumni Foundation, the 72,000. That would mean that they're going to become, they're going to have, they're going to hire the Resource Coordinator and that means they're the lead agency?
I presume. I, I mean, we, we have arrangements with ABC as lead agency, we've got arrangements with YMCA. I, I wasn't aware that Walnut was going to have, have the Alumni Foundation.
But that's a specific school foundation.
Yeah.
Versus a, another group that we have. I mean, I just, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I, I don't know that that's, I would like General Counsel to see if that's allowable after what we've lived through before.
Of course, thanks.
Are you, are you concerned, Ms. Bolton, that it's not legal?
I don't think we, I mean, it's, where we had intertwined and interfaced foundation for the specific school, it, it was a problem. And I know when we create new foundations per schools, there is a separation that has to occur and has to be sustained. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, Lord knows they, you know, they do so much, but I, I'd like to at least pull that till we know that it's legal or-
Conflict-wise, that's kind of what you're concerned about or whether there's a conflict?
Yeah, I, I just know that y'all have taught me that there has to be this big separation between the foundation and the school.
Sure, there, there does. And, and again, I'm not, I, I, I'm glad to look into it further. Off the top of my head, I cannot think of a reason why we couldn't have an arrangement for them to serve as lead agency. Just as, for example, ABC, which is a foundation for the district as a whole, has been contracted to be a lead agency for individuals as well.
Versus a foundation specific to a school.
Yeah, I understand there's a difference.
That's a big difference.
It could be a difference. Yeah.
So would it be most appropriate for us to pull this one while we, while we clarify it? Yes. So we can, we'll strike this one from the Treasures Report.
Okay. Last call on the Treasures Report. Okay, so that when we, when, when Ms. Hughes calls the roll here in a minute, that's going to include the pulling of that particular resource agency item.
Correct, yes. And that's, and that is on page seven, number one, under Agreement.
Great.
So it's one M.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hughes, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
And President Lindy?
Yes. Wonderful. All right, so we're moving right along. It is 8:47. We're going to get to our Board Matters. So I think both of these were added by Ms. Bolton. The first one is on Metro.
And, Mr. President, I'm assuming that the, based upon what occurred in Finance Committee Meeting, I'm assuming that the Metro sort of contract negotiations are, are going to be presented. Is this where we want to have that discussion? And as for number two, I think we can pull it because I think we had that discussion when we just did the Governance Piece.
That sounds great. So we're going to hear from the Administration on Sorda?
Yes, Mr. Hoyne?
Good evening. At the Finance Committee on Friday, the Administration was asked to provide an update on our contract with Sorda Metro. As you recall, the previous contract with Metro was a five-year contract, which was first negotiated in 2017, 18, expiring during the 21, 22 school year. The Administration, Superintendent Wright, as well as our new Transportation Director, Demetrius Martin, who we're very pleased to have, have been meeting with Sorda to work out the details for next year. We shared a draft of the contract with the Board to review electronically on Friday and subject to your feedback, I think the Administration's prepared to recommend that contract to the Board. I, I have just summarized very quickly some of the draft terms in the 22, 23 contract with Sorda Metro. First of all, it, it is contemplated to be a shorter term. We got some feedback from Board members that they'd like to see a shorter term, not, not a five-year, at least for now. And so we've negotiated, the, the current draft would be a one-year renewable, only with the agreement of both parties. Cost-wise, you know, I, I really, I think we, it's to Metro and Sorda's credit, they have not increased the cost of a student pass, essentially all the way back from this previous five-year contract, still contemplating charging the same amount, $315. There was some discussion between the parties about how to handle sort of some of their administrative costs. Uh, and I think we've, uh, reached at least, uh, uh, an agreement that, uh, or, or we believe it's reasonable that, that they would put on an administrative fee per pass of $2.50. We, we believe that to be reasonable. The, the cost of single ride passes is still the same. Uh, they, they have not increased that over the last five, now six years. $1.25 a pass. That, that's essentially, those are used in circumstances where, for example, we're obtaining a replacement pass for a student. A student might be given two or three single ride passes to get the student to and from school for, for that interim, you know, two or three days when it takes to get a new pass issued or a new student who's coming to school. The cost of extracurricular passes, so this will be two-tiered. For students, high school students who have a regular school year, $315 pass, there is no additional charge for us to put the student on an extracurricular pass, which would open up the hours for the student to be able to, um, get to and from school after hours, for example, to accommodate practices, et cetera. Seventh and eighth graders who next year will be on yellow bus, to open up a extracurricular pass for them would be an additional charge of $38.50. Again, no change in the, or no increase to us from what Metro is, has charged in previous years. Billing cycle, that, yep, is the next slide. Uh, billing cycle, uh, this is some discussion. Basically, the parties are, are, I think, in agreement that we would keep it as, as we have under the, where, where we pay three equal installments over the course of the year. Reimbursement for unused passes, I think there's some improvement here under previous contracts. It's sort of contemplated that CPS would have the burden of turning in physically the passes that were unused. Uh, that, that's obviously a, a little bit anachronistic as now, you know, Metro has the ability to just shut off passes that are being unused. So, uh, this is improved for us, I think. Now sorta Metro will reimburse CPS for unused passes without us having to, for example, turn them in. The hours that school passes are valid, but what I'm understanding from the, our discussions is they, they will open up the hours to whatever we, we ask them to. In, in other words, if, if we have an interest in restricting hours to make sure students, let's say, aren't staying after school and are getting on a bus and, and getting home and not waiting two or three routes to get home, that we have the ability to do that. By contrast, to open up hours, some board members had asked about, for example, opening them up for weekend use for extracurriculars that might be occurring on weekends. My understanding is that sorta will work with us and put the hours on those passes that we ask them to. That, that's, I think, consistent with our discussions.
That's correct.
So that's on the hours that they're valid, days of school that they're valid. This would go through June 30. That would help us get through summer scholars, ensuring that students have a ride to and from school for summer scholars. Uh, replacement passes, uh, families would still have to pay $10 for a replacement pass. We have some data there on how many replacement passes were issued in previous years. Routing, uh, you know, this is, this is a decision, this is a, a topic that is essentially sacred for, for Metro. They have, uh, set, in, in our previous contract, uh, Metro was very clear, they were responsible for all routing decisions and, and that continues to be true under this contract. Metro and CPS are, are reviewing routes to ensure that students are not assigned to a route with more than one transfer. And I, I understand that there's planning already in place to communicate to families what routes they have. Uh, that, that will start on August 7th, I believe. And, um, the superintendent can, can add to that. The, the only other topic, uh, that there's, uh, reference in the contract to safety and security, the same as previous contracts, that's a joint responsibility of CPS and Metro. Did you want to add something on the communications that?
I will. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Hoen. So in terms of the routing and communication to families, uh, we spent a lot of time working in partnership with, uh, sorta to be prepared to communicate to families what their buses are, uh, but not just to communicate to them their buses or their routes, um, but to also have actionable, uh, activities for them. So on August the 7th, that is the first opportunity, uh, that is our, um, community cookout, um, that we're having at Washington Park. Sorta will be there, of course, with the bus there, um, and also able to help parents navigate on the website, um, where they're able to find their transportation routes. The one thing that I do want to point out, um, for the routes, we are communicating with them, when the routes are rolled over for this year, um, they will notify us. We will have the, uh, information on our website as well as on their website. So it will be important that when families go in to look at those routes, that they future date it to the 14th, because the routes that would also support our school routes will not start until August the 14th, which is the following Sunday. Um, the other thing that following Sunday, which is on the 14th, we will also conduct a live, um, uh, parent session. It's, it's on a Sunday, a Sunday afternoon, but we will communicate, we will conduct that live, um, so that we can actually show parents on that day how to find their routes on the system so that we're doing it at the same time. So it's in time so that they're able to see, uh, see the information that's there. And at that point, there won't be a need for them to future date. We will record that, make sure we have it on our website so that families can go back and, uh, watch that as well. We will also, this past year, uh, we did not send out the information in advance, based on what the team has shared with me. Um, the sorta team shared it and our personal team shared it as well. We did not send out route information to families this year. Um, the postcards that, that generally go out, we did not send that out this past year. We didn't send them. And I see Mr. Craig nodding there. Um, so this year, we will be sending out the routing information just as we will send it out for our yellow buses. We will be sending it out for, uh, Metro as well.
And so the, um, just clarifying where we are procedurally, there, there is, there is, is or is not a request for us tonight to approve something?
In terms of?
The, the, the contract?
There, this, there isn't.
It's not, I don't believe it's in the treasurer's report.
We're double checking. We, after, after our finance, I think we pulled it from the treasurer's report so that we could discuss it tonight. And then for a vote on August 1st.
On August 1st.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
So it's my understanding.
Questions then for, or please?
There was also, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Um, Board President, there was also some conversation as to whether or not we needed to do an emergency meeting, um, to, to conduct, to have conversation or do the voting earlier. Um, I did communicate with sorta this weekend. And so if, as long as we go on the 1st, we will continue the work that we need to do in terms of planning, so an emergency meeting would not be necessary.
Right.
Thank you very much. Um, do board members have questions for the administration?
Start with Carol.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah. Um, I, and I don't know if this needs to be in the contract. I think we need to have an awareness of it and maybe a conversation with sorta, sorta. And it did, this didn't happen a lot, but, but anytime it happens, it's concerning. When, when our students lose their passes, and we know they will lose their passes, there were incidents reported, at least shared with me, that bus drivers, the drivers would not allow them on the bus. But they have to be given a reasonable enough time to be able to go and ask for a new pass. So I, I'm concerned about that. We don't want it, I mean, ideally, the student would go to the school, whatever the process is, they would request that and could get it as soon as possible. But I had a couple of parents who called me saying that, um, their students called them because they, the drivers would not let them on the bus.
So one of the, the areas, and the replacement pass is a question that has come up. There are two different ways that it's being addressed right now. One is with the daily pass, uh, the dollar, the reduced price for the daily pass. Um, and it, it generally takes about 48 hours for them to get a replacement pass once, a, a full replacement pass once their pass has been lost. Um, last year, at one point, the, we as a district used to cover the cost for the replacement passes, uh, but there was some concern that there was, um, that it was being abused. And so therefore, that cost is now given back to parents. Um, if there is a situation where it is, um, you know, where it's determined that that's a challenge for families, then there has also been a workaround that's been done for that as well, as long as it's communicated. So the single-use passes are the ones that are at the school that they give to the, that are given to the student.
Okay. So the replacement passes are like, they can just go in and get something for that day?
So the, so, no. So the replacement pass is a new bus pass that has to be printed for them and encrypted. All of the individual passes are encrypted. The daily use passes, which are the ones here that are referenced for $1.25, are the reduced cost passes, um, that are given to them at the school individually. The one challenge that we have here, and, and I think it's something that we need to discuss, previously, the district had covered that cost, um, for schools. Now, schools cover the cost for the daily passes. So that's not a part of our contract at all. So there is a inequity issue that we would need to discuss because if it's a school that has the finances to purchase the daily use passes and they have those at the school for their students. If it's not a school that has the ability to do that, then they don't have those. So that's something that, that we really need to talk about in terms of how we look at the daily use passes and if that's something that we want to invest in upfront and give each school a certain number of daily use passes.
Thanks, Ms. Jones. Did you have others? No. Uh, Mr. Craig?
So thank, thank you, Dan, and, uh, thank you, Superintendent Wright, for putting this together. I know at the finance committee meeting, we talked about wanting to see kind of the bullet point down to explain what's in it as well as kind of the differences and that's, that's really what you all put together. I wanted to ask kind of a couple of questions. I think you actually started to touch on this one, my first question, which really was around that single use, the single-day pass. And it's really just about how are we going to be informing as to that process? Because I think that may have also, touching on to Vice President Jones's point, may have also been part of the problem is that if a parent or a student doesn't know how to take those steps to get that single use, single-day use pass, or if it's different at each school, it sounds like it might be, um, that could present some of the issues for a student to, to struggle to get that. And so I think making sure that's a part of that communication process that we're doing, sounds like a, a big issue. And that's what may tap into the other issue that I, I mean, not really issue, but other thing I was observing, which was this issue of the 4,675 replacement passes from last year, which, uh, is what, like three-quarters of the riders from last year?
Correct. It's almost, I mean, we have like 5,500, 6,000 that actually ride. So almost everyone had a replacement pass, right?
And I know you mentioned it at the finance committee meeting, so I wanted to have it also mentioned here, that we are looking at to what other options going forward with regards to how we are able to implement a pass ourselves versus using, uh, the passes offered through Metro, because I think that is an alarming number that I'm probably not that surprised about, but it also means that we are doing a lot of processing of people's replacement passes throughout the year.
Correct. So, so two things to, to your, to your question. The first is we are co-creating an FAQ for families that will be placed on our website and on sorta's website, um, just around our program, around how to get information in terms of how to get bus passes, where they go, what they need to do. So that's an FAQ that when we actually launch, um, we'll have that joint FAQ and a number that families can call to get additional information. So that's, that's one piece of that in terms of communication. The second, um, in terms of the replacement pass, we, we are, so if we had a universal ID system, we could use that, um, and affix the sorta, um, scan code, if you will, to that pass. So there just hasn't been enough time for us, you know, um, with the start of May 2nd, there has not been enough time for us to really explore and get a card, an ID system that will allow us to do that. But our team has already started working on it, looking at the IDs, because the other thing, while we're talking about sorta right now, we also have yellow buses that we want to make sure that we can also, you know, we're pretty definitive on when children get on and when they get off. And that's not, that's not a capability that we have right now as a district. So it is in progress. I am, we will have a, a fix for that by next school year, by the beginning of next school year. Uh, we are also, we also have at least two schools that we're looking at piloting, hopefully as early as January, so that we'll be able to collect some data on it, um, also as we move forward.
That's awesome. I, I think it's just really great to be able to use technology to, to track some of this information and to learn how to do these practices better. So I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Uh, other board member questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. And, and I'll, to try to do this as briefly as I can, um, and I hope that you won't have to indulge me too much, but some big things, I'm glad it's for one year right now and not any longer like the five-year one was. I really am thrilled about us wanting to control the communication. It was terrible last year to, or this, whatever year this is at the point, uh, where we were having to depend upon Metro to communicate to our families instead of us. That was very bad. So I'm thrilled with that. I also am glad that you did the chart piece and I have some more specific stuff than that, but also again emphasizing to the board that this is, the idea that this having extra routes, which we do not have, was, was not illegal. And, and I appreciate you reiterating it. On another large issue, if you could, uh, explain, and because this is a little different than I think what we may have heard in finance, the, um, you know, the Tripper thing is a federal piece, but the new law that we've talked about more than a dozen times, revised code, uh, from our great state legislature, um, that our kids on Metro can't have more than one transfer. And my understanding was that Metro, and I'm not going to say Metro anymore, I'm going to say sorta, because it's a board. Sorta, um, I, I don't see in the contract where they say that they have any responsibility whatsoever without abiding by that law.
That's, that's right. They've disclaimed any responsibility. That, that's, that's right. They, that's our responsibility.
Okay. Because I think you kind of have a little different on that one, but they're saying that if any of our students have more than one transfer, it's on us to provide them the transportation or something different? Because state law actually made for charter kids, not really our kids.
That's right.
Uh, very frankly. How, how do we do that without sorta's involvement?
So it's not a viable form of transportation for us to use public transit for a student who would require more than one transfer. My understanding is?
Dan, Dan, with the mask, it's just hard to hear. Can you pull it away just a little bit?
Yeah, of course. So again, um.
Be, be safe. I just hope you pull it or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I lost my train of thought. The, uh, it, it is not a viable form of transportation for us to use public transit for a student who would require more than one transfer to get to school. We're, we're just not, just like, we're not allowed to use some other forms of transportation. Public transit can't be used if it would require the student to have more than one transfer. That's how the law is written.
And so one of the things that we've done at this point, um, and that's really what the note in the, in this particular document was to clarify. So two things have happened. One, um, Metro, the Metro team has taken our current students and cross-referenced that the students, uh, don't have more than one transfer, uh, currently. We are now doing the double check for that as well. So that's what that means when it says that we're working together through that process, um, because the design, the way that it's designed right now, there should not be students that have more than one transfer, um, based on all of the information that we've been provided. But we want to test it to make sure that as we're going through the process, as we communicate with families, as we have families log in as well, that if there, by chance, is an error there, then that's something that we can get corrected.
So we do know that this past year, there were students that had more than one transfer. That's the data that we have seen this past year. So, Dan, if you can repeat what you just said, you're saying the law says that no, that our students can't, cannot be, uh, transported on public transportation if they have more than one?
And you, again, you're right. The, the law was written to protect charter school students, community school students. Public schools can't use public transit to transport charter school students if it would result in them having more than one transfer. The Board of Education, in adopting its transportation policy, said that by board policy for public school students as well, for our students, we would not be assigning students to public transit that had more than one transfer. Does that answer your question?
Right. So what I'm saying is in this contract, we have not been able yet to figure out the language as to who's assuming responsibility to get the kids with more than one transfer to school?
I think sorta is saying that's not going to be their responsibility. It's, it's not under the law, it's our responsibility under this. And, and that's what they're confirming in the contract.
And we're looking to find out the number of kids that would be, teenagers that that would be?
Based on the information that's been provided to us, we don't have any of our current students, based on what's been provided.
I hear you.
We don't have current students that are in that scenario. However, we are cross-referencing the data. Um, we will continue to cross-reference, um, as we begin to work with families as well. If we identify any others, uh, we will make sure that we follow up so that we can ensure that they don't have more than one transfer. One of the challenges that has, that's consistently been raised, um, by the Metro team and by our team is the, the, the lack of communication to start with from last year. from last year, only got compounded. And so there were students that were catching a bus that was farther away from another bus stop, but by the time it was actually determined, it had happened so long. And so that's something that was really addressed and something that was followed up with. So our goal this time is to make sure that we're as proactive as we can be with cross-referencing, looking at routes, looking at some of the, you know, some of the areas that have been identified. There were several neighborhoods, I think, that you referenced for us as well, and cross-referencing in those neighborhoods also.
That sounds, that sounds good. I just know that we, we did have kids with more than one transfer. At least that's what we were, we were informed. And I, I'm glad that we're cross-referencing the data that, that Sorda is giving us. A couple other things that, to the degree that it matches, this contract matches the policies that we passed, are we somewhere 60%, 70%, 80% close to whatever the policy was? Because you referenced our policy as well as the revised code.
I, I think we're in compliance with the policies that the board has.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And before we have to vote on this on August 1st, will we have some more numbers and some verification, especially about transporting these kids that if they do have more than one transfer?
We can work on a subset of what that information would be. I'm a little apprehensive to say yes by August the 1st, because it is actually a tedious process. It's one that we're looking up individually to make sure that it works.
Great. Thank you. And the payments are three times a year. That's fine with me. I do worry in the contract or the proposal or draft or whatever, it says that routing is totally to Sorda. I, I get that. I don't have a problem with that. They can route their parts out. That's fine. But I worry about the word planning. Because planning's in there, because I think back on what all transportation was doing this past year, periodically planning with them, adjusting routes, changing things. I think I, I would worry about we're not allowed to participate in the planning. Because right now we are. And so I, I worry, I, I do worry about that based upon what we did. And I'm, I'm close. I also worry too about them saying that, you know, we can't rely that there'll always be cameras. And that I would hope that there would always be cameras available with that, hopefully. The, the last, just last couple of things, if I could. We don't, I hope the board, and I, is it addressed in the contract? Because not all the specifics are in there, rightfully so. This open pass that we had, you're saying that, and maybe the board has to tell us, you know, where we are. I like that it's only school days. Of course, the charter people and the other schools have different days than we have, and we have to pay for that as well, I think. So it's, it's not just our school days, but it's everybody's school days that we're paying for. But it's only school days and it's restricted to the school hours?
So, so essentially, the, Sorda has, Metro has agreed that they will, they will do whatever we ask them to do in terms of the passes. There, so whether that, so right now, so, so right now, it's, the conversation has been around the same setup from last year, where it was based on the day, and then there were the, the passes that were covering the activity buses. And then the seventh and eighth grade students will have activity passes this year as well. One of the questions that has, that has been raised has been around specific days, for example, like ACT or SAT testing days. So any days that we note, and that, you know, with that being on Saturdays, or Iowa testing for that matter, if that's on a Saturday. So those would be days that we could open those passes so that students can ride the bus. But it's, it's really the will of the board, what the board would like to have happen in terms of the students' access. And they're doing, they will, if we want to open the entire weekend, they will do that as well and not charge us an additional cost for it.
I, I don't know. Just as one board member that's lived through this, I, I worry about anything that is beyond the school day unless it is specifically related to school. We have our teenagers everywhere, in the city and in the district. And we are responsible for getting them to and from school. I don't want to assume as a board or a district, the responsibility and the liability of what we did do this year. I mean, we curbed it when they first said it was like six days a week and it was six to whatever, I think it was 10 or something at night. So, but I like that idea that we can be as specific. It's sort of almost an equity thing where you're adding a particular time and then the extracurricular piece. Finally, I, I really have difficulty trusting some of the information. And I, I would hope that we would, you know, it's the, I hate to quote Reagan, but it's trust and verify, because so much of the information, we couldn't tell. Right, our people waited to try to find out ridership on a monthly basis for where the kids were going. So I, I would really value continued trusting, yes, and building the teamwork and controlling the communication. And I do want to know how we're dealing with the kids with more than one transfer. And there has to be, it's a number. And there were numbers given to us from the Transportation Department as to how many that was. And, and I would welcome any other opportunity to review and have you share whatever is going on regarding this. And applaud whatever is happening on the yellow bus, and we hope that it is. But this is critical to get this right for our teenagers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Dr. Moffett?
I'm going to be very brief. I, I think that to Eve's point, all of the things that you listed lead to the superintendent and her team having effective communication. So I'm going to ask that you, rather than give us a contingency plan, I don't want to see a contingency plan on people that are taking two or more transfers. I'd like to see a communication plan, which you and I have already spoken about, about how you're going to communicate with the parents, how you're going to communicate with students. We, we've talked about, you and I have talked about doing an expectation for the students so that they understand what the expectations are for them in riding a bus, so that we can have some less disciplined referrals, that's our bus drivers out less. And then that same message can be sent to parents, I think, and the community. I think that the biggest thing from my vantage point, having been on the parent's seat before, is that communication broke down. And my ask of you slash assignment slash almost beg is that you develop a communication strategy that you and/or your team can follow when and/or if things do break down. There is a process in place so that all of these things, while you may not know what they are, but there's a, there's a strategy involved in how to solve them. And so that's what I think can help with all of those things that we don't know about. And you can't be expected to address, but rather than waste time there, I would like to see things that you can control. And I applaud the efforts of the, yourself or the entire team. This was, and, and board member, Bolden as well, and whomever else took the time to kind of get to this point. I think that our parents are looking for safe routes to school. They're looking for their children to be transported effectively. And that, that job is yours. And so just please communicate effectively with the, with the parents, the board, and, and Sorda. And I think that, that you'll be able to offset any, any contingencies.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Board members who haven't shared anything yet, anything you want to add? I, I know we have one more from Ms. Bolden, but I wanted to share a piece too. I think over the course of last school year, in the conversations that I was able to have with parents, this was always one of the first issues to come up. I mean, the busing was, was, particularly for parents of kids in high schools, really, really hard. And I think what I want to be able to do in, in voting for the contract is to go back to them in good faith and say, we heard you. Here's what's going to be different this year. And I certainly do hear lots of examples of that. I think one is particularly the piece about one transfer. You know, like I think that is, that is meaningful and helpful. You hear other things about, you know, buses showing up or kids getting to school late and missing part of their instruction on the first part of the day. Or, you know, so many parents choosing to drop their kids instead, that the, the drop-off line is so long with kids getting to school. And you can't fix all of that with one contract, I know. But, but is there, is there anything else that you would want us as board members to be able to say back to parents and teachers too? We've worked really hard at this. Here's, here's, here's what we're proud of. Here's what we think is going to be different this year. And that's why we're, we're supporting this particular contract.
Thank you. So I think to, to Dr. Moffett's point and to your point, as well as to Board Member Bolton, we know how important this is. And it is necessary for us to be all hands on deck when it comes to making sure that our children are getting to school safely, but also that there is a renewed confidence in the relationship that we have with the transportation, with, with, with Metro. Right now, that is our way of getting our ninth through 12th graders to school. And so we want to be good partners, as well as we want to hold ourselves accountable for what we can do. So we, our teams are meeting jointly. We've already, we've already made the determination that we're going to meet together at least once every two months, so that we're able to review where we are in terms of process more frequently if necessary. We, are, both of our communications team members were a part of that meeting because we, at that meeting, planned a joint communication plan, which I already have a draft of that plan, that we would then be able to not only circulate within the team, but also share collectively. And I think the other thing is really for us to be out in front of it. So it is not something that, you know, that, I, I, I trust my team members as we're building, but this is also something that I have to be hands-on with, because I need to know firsthand where we are, what we're doing, and some of the tough questions that need to be asked, sitting across the table, looking eyeball to eyeball with someone that's making those determinations. So if anything, I would, I would ask that we trust the process, trust but verify. I understand that part. But give us an opportunity to, I, I can't change what happened last year, but give us an opportunity to gather the information that we have, to work with the team, to give our expectations, to put more in a documented format than maybe we've had before, so that we can move forward for our students.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bolden, last one?
Yes, last one. Last year, because of the quick change towards the end of the summer, we were forced to buy passes for virtually all of our high school students, or seven through 12. And we don't need to have that happen. We don't need to necessarily buy passes that are not going to be used, especially not to get to and from school. The other piece is critical to the instruction that the superintendent and others have made reference to. It's that 30 minutes and 30 minutes. We can't have kids getting there an hour and a half early or leaving an hour later. So as they do these routes on their regular routes and they make those plans, we can't have a portion of our staff at every one of these schools spending a disproportionate amount of time being bus monitors. That should stop in, with the, you know, the yellow bus experience. And, and then finally, for our teenagers and living in a difficult time, and very frankly, a violent time, we have to also keep in mind, as we look at those replacement passes, of our, what, 15 or so high schools, counting even the K-12 buildings and whatever. There's only like three of our high schools that don't have virtually 90% free and reduced lunch. And that's why we decided a decade ago that it would be free at great cost. So I, I just, this, this is a, a group of kids and families that don't need to be, well, let's say it, face any more challenges than they already do.
So I think in terms of, we're, we're open either way. It's just that we have to decide upfront whether or not we're going to, we're going to take the cost. I know that there was some concern from, from the team, as was shared with, with Metro, that there was a lot of abuse that came to the passes. There was the selling of passes to other individuals. So as soon as we get our ID system that has a picture on it, that makes it a little less likely to do that. But it's really a matter of, 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 of the board's discretion. You know, in terms of whether or not we purchase the passes, whether or not we purchase the replacement passes, it, it really is up to the board, because whatever that is, that's a cost that we incur. And so we'll just, it would need to, and right now, the cost of replacement passes for us is not something that we have included in the, in the dollar amount for the contract. So that would be something that we would need to, to include there, if, if that's a certain number. I mean, there, there would need to be some, I would think, some kind of guidance and guidelines that would go along with that. But it's definitely something that we can further explore, if that's the will of the board.
Thank you very much. I think we'll then move on with our, our next item, and we'll have a vote on the contract on the 1st of October, of August, not October, excuse me. Okay, let's see if we can get everybody home in five minutes. On inquiries and updates, are there any inquiries and updates? Okay. Yes?
Is there any follow-up regarding admittance into Hollet Hills High School? From Student Achievement Chair or whomever?
I did get that memo, and it is on my list. I'd like to talk to the superintendent about it in preparation of Student Achievement Committee.
Thank you.
On assignments, I have one, which is to schedule a meeting for the committee chairs and the superintendent to build a proposal for new committee work plans under the vision that we discussed this evening. Who is the person who should do that? That should schedule that meeting?
That's the one with Council Grade City School.
It's the ones with the chairs of each committee and the superintendent.
If it's a meeting with the board members, I would, I mean, I can, we can, we can talk about it. Vice President and our meeting tomorrow.
This is an assignment. It's going to Vice President Jones. It's going to happen in the meeting tomorrow, or at least it'll, it'll get started there.
At least give a date.
And I'll make sure that happens.
Or recommendations for that.
That is the one assignment that I have. Are there other assignments? Okay. Any announcements or kudos?
I have some. Rob has my slide. I wish we, I'm sorry, did I go in front of you? Did I say something? Okay, well, good. So I just, I'm so tired. And everybody else is tired. I wish we could do these earlier so people could see themselves getting recognized. But I have a slide, a few slides, to show appreciation to a couple of our departments that had an opportunity to spend some time with. And it's coming, coming. So the first one is we, I had an opportunity to, I talked about STEM with the preschoolers at Hayes Porter, but this time, I wanted to show you some pictures. I was with teacher Debbie Harrison and her para Christina Matthews. And these are just some of the little guys that I was working with. And I, I made the pictures. I have a, a thing about girls in STEM, so I made the pictures of the girls a little bit bigger, because I like the girls playing with the robots. But these are some of our littles that were showing me what they're doing, and they were playing with robots. And they were learning about some geometry. The little guy in the bottom right was learning how to flick a, an object into a cup that was a little bit further. They were talking about velocity. They, they, we just had a great time. So that was my time at STEM at Hayes Porter. So thank you so much to the Early Learning Childhood Department. The next slide? We had an opportunity, some of my colleagues and myself, to celebrate the retirement of Debbie Alsop from Families Forward. So these are just a couple- So these are just a couple of pictures of, of us at the celebration, and she's, she said she's been there for, was it 22 years? 22 years, and that was just a, a great time to say thank you to her. Next slide. And then we had some of our departments represented at the NAACP block party. These are just a few of the photos, the, the representation was great. We had, I wanted to say thanks to Michelle Thatcher, I hope I pronounced everybody's name right, Donna Jenkins, Kelly Hill, they were, they were from Customer Care, Vera Brooks, Michelle and Tabitha of Early Childhood, and Michelle Bolden of the Office of Communication and Engagement, they organized that event, and NAACP really, really, really enjoyed it, and I think they made some connections moving forward. So it was just a good time in the community. I know board member Weinberg was going to put up some pictures of Juneteenth, but she didn't get it in, so that was another event that we, we were represented in the community with the district. So just wanted to say thank you to those departments and those people, and whenever I go out in the community, I want to make sure that I share a special kudos to them.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any other kudos? Okay. Am I missing anything? Having no other business before us, I declare this meeting adjourned.